Like to call the meeting to order, Town of Southbridge, Joint General Government Subcommittee slash Town Council meeting. It is Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. in the Veterans Room. This is being recorded by audio and video. Uh, agenda number one is call the meeting to order. Agenda number two is roll call. Counselor Marquetti. Um, Counselor Dow is not here at the moment. Citizen Member Clemens?
Present.
Citizen Member Kelly?
Present.
Present. Okay. Uh, we have a quorum. Um, agenda item number three is review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Gary Fontaine as an alternate member of the liquor board effective immediately. Pending successful completion of state ethics, entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Um, discussion with the town manager?
So, uh, as you're aware, there's a, um, Lane Wondelaire was the alternate on the liquor board, and with the resignation of one of the regular members, he assumed the position of a regular member, which we hadn't had an alternate member in a long time. And then as that opening came up, Mr. Fontaine, who had been a long time police officer in the Town of Southbridge, past legislature agent, approached us and, uh, asked, um, to be considered as a member, and I recommend.
Okay, great. Um, Citizen Member Clemens?
Is there a time on the, um, usually there's a question time? Is there, is it so many years of the?
Uh, yeah, that'd be three years.
So we should revise that to have some sort of dates in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, when it gets to council, we gotta make sure we put, uh, what are we doing? Two, two thousand twenty-six?
Yeah, that's quite effective. Yeah, it'll be two, two thousand twenty-six, yes, because.
Uh, are we gonna go with June thirtieth?
Ju- yeah, our appointments end on June thirtieth.
All right. Um, so I'm gonna get that fixed for the general meeting next week. Does anybody else have any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present, and Counselor Dow is now present. Um, we go to agenda item number four, review and discuss a transfer request for thirteen thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents from account number zero zero one one three two five seven eight one zero zero, council reserve, to account number zero nine four zero 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 five seven four zero zero zero, insurance prop liability to cover a fine from the Internal Revenue Service for employee shared responsibility payments. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
So.
There's a motion in a second. Um, Mr. Town Manager?
So, this issue had come up a couple of years ago. Members on the Town Council remember that it was a meeting that, uh, the former Town Manager McCall had said that it was being handled and everything was taken care of, and it was completed through the former H R director, and we are unable to find any documentation to say that this fine has been taken care of, and we're still responsible for the payment of this fine. Um, it has to do with coverages for, uh, health insurance.
Uh-huh.
So, we are responsible for paying this fine, and we have no option but to pay the fine.
So, this was an old fine that the, the Mr. McCall said we paid and it wasn't paid, basically?
He said, yeah, stated that we had gotten a notice back several years ago that we were responsible for it. It indicated that it had been taken care of.
Yeah.
And, uh, the treasurer collector has this notice and stated that we had to pay it, and these are the accounts that she, um, indicated that we could pay it on.
Understood. Yeah. Understood. A quick question, do you know if we, that number like went up at all for being late? Like was, uh, that number originally in front of Mr. McCall years ago, was it less and it has increased because of the fact that it wasn't paid?
That I do not know, and you just indicated that was the.
Okay. No, I understand.
That was the bill.
Okay, um, discussion, I saw, um, Counselor Shenyu's hand was up for a few minutes.
Has anybody reached out to the I R S to, to see if we could get forgiveness?
Um, I understand is the treasurer collector has, and they stated we have to pay this.
Thank you. Uh, Citizen Member Clemens?
Well, I guess, did any, did you look back at any documents if McCall, was there a recollection of timeframe as to when this was received or anything?
There's absolutely no documents that we can uncover in my office or the treasurer collector's office that there was any communication with the I R S.
Right, so, but you're saying, who told you now again that it was, Mr. McCall said he had taken care of it?
Well, I was on council when he had stated that, that case.
Oh. You were on council back, okay, well, interesting, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he said we had gotten his notice and that we were, he was looking at it and he said.
Was it, is it on an agenda somewhere? Was this something he, in his announcements?
I'd have to, I'd have to look.
I'm just curious where the, where the, the, you know, the backtrack is here, so at least have some dates on something.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's why everything has to be kept. Okay, interesting.
Yep.
I'm not saying that, um, it probably is due, it's just, back then, if you said you had to pay it, wouldn't there, he had to ask for a vote to take the money from somewhere to pay it then?
He didn't pay, he said they forgave it and it was all set.
Oh, he said they forgave it?
It was all set, and there's absolutely no documentation to that.
Oh. Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, wow, interesting. I think he would be, yeah, so.
And. And you verified with the I R S that it truly isn't, needs to be paid?
Yeah, the treasurer collector had said that there's no option but to pay it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So he just said it was forgiven?
And that was with a different treasurer collector as well when this first came up, so you had, uh, Lonnie, I believe, was here during that period of time.
Yeah.
Um, and Sharon, I believe, so. We've had so many changes in treasurer collectors.
Right.
Changes in town managers, and.
We don't, we don't know what the original bill was?
Where is this?
This is the only, yeah, notice they said we all, I mean, I'll gladly go back to the treasurer collector, I have it come before you, that's fine, I mean, I mean.
You're saying this is a fine?
This is a fine.
So where's the payment part that this is based on? I think it's probably.
Uh, yeah, I'd have to get more documentation.
Do you want to say like, this is the fine, what's it based on? What, and is this?
Right. Okay, yeah, let me get more documentation, this is what she.
I'm sure the I R S can give you a breakdown of what this fine is for. Is this, like you said, late fees and fine, or just fine?
Yeah. Yeah, I would just say, I, I postpone it till the next, I can get more information.
Well, what's your deadline to pay it though, 'cause clearly it's due.
It's past due as it is, yeah.
Yeah, I see that, so are we again incurring? Okay.
It's a messy situation when it comes to that, so. I'll get more information if you wanna postpone it till the next meeting.
Yeah. I see two thousand. Okay.
It's not gonna make a difference 'cause it's past due anyway, so.
Well, every month makes a difference.
I know.
So it's up to council.
In theory, yeah, it, you would think that they add on every month, um.
I would say if you gotta pay, you gotta pay, but you should find out what it was for, either.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Counsel Marquetti, yeah? Thank you. Thank you, three, three, um, I was just wondering what, what is this for, and what was the fine for? What is it that we didn't pay, or?
It's the health insurance.
And, and the I R S says we didn't work.
We didn't, yeah, there's a certain percentage of your full-time employees that have to, it's a premium tax credit for, if you work so many hours, you have to offer health insurance.
I can read that, but I see so many, uh, average insurance.
You know, yeah, so, I'll get clarification from the treasurer collector.
So, um, sometimes when I see something like this happening in the private industry, maybe it's different in the public industry, it's the person who made the mistake is liable, or we can't hold somebody liable.
Uh, with the employer, with the employer, the Town of Southbridge is the employer, so we're ultimately responsible for a payment.
Oh, okay. I've seen employees who have been held responsible with.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nor, do you have anything else on this? But.
She, she just came back, 'cause she.
The employer, this tax I R S.
Is this, uh, about the affordability penalty?
Yeah.
Okay, so that just means that we didn't provide an affordable health, um, or medical coverage for some employees, meaning that they were making, um, uh, below maybe the, uh, poverty line, and we didn't meet the federal, um, average line of, you know, we don't offer, uh, what are they called? H S As, um, we have a high premium plan.
We have a meeting with, uh, Meyer this week, and we'll get some additional information and get it forward.
Thank you.
And the treasurer collector will be back this week, so.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Now, I would just, um, if we got a fine for procedurally being wrong on the process, because I'm with, uh, Ms. Clemens, you wait one month, you pay more money. You wait two months, you're gonna pay more money.
Right.
I would be pressed to pay it if we owe, and then find out what it was, but if it, if it's a procedure that we did something wrong,
Yeah.
and it wasn't a money thing, I mean, the way, usually, uh, if it's an insurance thing, I thought, anything over twenty hours, we have to provide health insurance, am I correct?
Which we do, and.
No, I was.
Go ahead, No.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Don't worry.
Um, we do offer, and we offer the qual, the eligible employees', um, health insurance, but this is not something new, um, and we did actually bring that bill down through some mistakes. Um, and every time, or every month that we delay this payment, we will approve, um, late payments.
Yeah, e- especially if, uh, Town Manager says he's got meetings this week, I, I feel like you, you have some sort of more information Monday. I, I, I mean, if we're gonna continue to get late fees no matter what, I think we could, we could recommend it safely, knowing that this is a mistake and we have to pay it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, Ms. Clemens?
Just say something else too, so, we're kind of delving around that, the actual words are, you were charged an employer shared responsibility payment, and that is based on, and this is the part we wanna make sure we're now complying with, 'cause if this is quote the penalty only, um, it says you were charged that for the tax period of December thirty-first, twenty twenty, because in one or more months, one of the following occurred. You didn't offer minimum essential coverage, they call it M E C, to at least ninety-five percent of your full-time employees, and at least one full-time employee was allowed a premium tax credit. So to your point of, some people don't make enough to, for whatever, you, but according to this, you're supposed to offer this minimum essential coverage to at least ninety-five percent of your full-time employees, or there's another bullet, you offered the minimum essential coverage to at least ninety-five percent of your full-time employees and their dependents, but again, at least one full-time employee was allowed the P C.
Was allowed. Right.
So, my real concern now is, or you got this fine, you gotta pay it, that's, we get it, send it up, but are we still doing this by accident?
Yeah. I, I sure, I, I certainly hope not.
In other words? We, right, 'cause you're gonna get more of this as time goes on, because we know the government's always two years, three years late on you, so you're gonna get more.
Well, absolutely.
I would make sure with H R, whoever's in charge of all your medical, that we are doing this M E C stuff. You know, that ninety-five, you have to offer the minimum essential coverage to ninety-five percent of your full-time employees, and that's a Maya question, I mean, you got your plan for Maya, right? I mean, that's the.
This, yeah, this.
So Maya should know what you're offering and what kind of employees you have and all that, so either, either the government maybe has it wrong, doesn't know your employees or something, or they have it right and we don't have the right coverage. So that's a bigger problem on top of paying thirteen thousand dollars, 'cause you could get twenty, forty, eighty, you get a lot more money.
It is. Correct. That's.
So, yeah, we wanna know what this is all about, but you should first off make sure, pay it and make sure we're not getting fined more, because we're still not complying.
Yeah, and that's why later on this meeting, that's why we have some changes in some positions, to make sure that we can delve into this information?
Well, I must say, this is the first time I've heard this ever in, in my time being here.
Absolutely.
So, other people have been able to handle positions, that's what I'm just saying.
Um, we'll get to those positions later on, we'll have a conversation about.
We'll talk about it, when we get to those positions, we'll talk about it. Yes, exactly.
Um, I have Counsel Dow.
Thank you. Through you, it's anything to do with the overpayment too for the employee, wasn't working a year?
No, no, it's totally separate.
No.
I, yeah, I don't give a second question.
Yeah, totally separate, yeah.
Okay, um, Citizen Member Cle- Kelly, and then Counsel Shenyu.
I think you, I think we do have to pay this, but that doesn't mean we can't go back and take a look, and see whether or not this was in fact, you know, an appropriate fine, and appeal it, I mean, if necessary, we can always appeal it.
Right. Mm-huh.
And, uh, perhaps the I R S is wrong, I, you know, I, they're not always right.
Correct.
Yeah. So, but it's just, uh, it's a, it's a big chunk of money that we're asking, that's a paid fine, and I think it's pretty worth just going back and making sure that Absolutely. we actually do, we actually were in violation, um, before that arrest.
Um, Counsel Shenyu?
Jack, is this something that cooking company should be looking after?
Uh, probably not.
They're our, they're our, they're our insurance advisors.
Advisors, right.
We pay them five thousand dollars.
We'll ask them, we'll, we'll ask them when we have a meeting.
And, and, and Nor have something to add before I go back to this?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, um, this bill was around sixty-three thousand dollars, we did appeal it and made some corrections, and this is what is actually left.
Oh, well, that's, sounds sufficient to your concerns, I hope, um, 'cause we do have to pay it then if that's the case, and then, and we do have to make sure that it doesn't happen again, um, but that's, thank you for that additional information, um, Citizen Member Clemens, did you have more?
Yeah, just one thing, 'cause, uh, Counsel Dow brought that comment, this is talking about December of twenty twenty, when was that, I call it breach, or whatever you wanna call it?
Twenty-one.
In twenty-one, so technically now, 'cause I was thinking too, they might have had the data wrong and said we had X amount employees, we really didn't, ninety-five percent of, you know, X versus W or something is totally different, but, but it fits a different.
But, it was two years, uh, around, uh, two years, they must have done the payment.
And this was right before, so this is additional mess-ups the year before. Okay.
Right.
Um, well, if there's no further discussion, I mean, it sounds like we all wanna pay the bill, but I would like to take a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, by show of hands, all those in favor of recommending that we pay this? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Uh, agenda number five, we have review and discuss a transfer request for four hundred forty-one dollars from account number zero zero one three two dash five seven eight one zero zero, council reserve to account number zero zero one one four five dash five three eight one zero zero, surety bonds, to pay balance of bond that was issued and canceled from former treasurer collector, entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
Second.
Motion for my Counsel Dow, second, my Citizen Member Clemens, Mr. Manager?
Due to the several changes in the treasurer collector's office, we have bonds issued, canceled, reissued, um, and this is another bill that we have to take care of to.
Clean up.
Yeah.
I understand. Um, Mr. Counsel Shenyu?
Just a question, with our financial situation the way it is, uh, is there a possibility that the bond, before we cancel that bond, it would be instituted for negligence or something? 'Cause the bond is to protect us for.
Well, it would, it would be canceled effective the date she's no longer here, so it was issued and then canceled.
Okay.
So it's for the period of time that, that individual was.
If we find that through the closing of the books, that it was.
You'd still be bonded for the period of time that you were.
Okay. That's what I wanted.
So it's the issuance and then the cancellation, it was that period of time that issue to that. Does that make sense?
It does.
So we've had issued, so we had one for Joanne that was issued when she was here temporary, she left, that was canceled upon her leave-in, right? And then, we had the next one that came in, issued, period of time, canceled, and now we had to reissue Joanne where she is pending now. So we only have a certain amount issued within that bond account, and now this is.
So if we do find a problem?
You'd still be bonded for that period of time that she was at.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? Agenda item number six, review, discuss the town manager's proposal to reorganize the treasurer collector office and create the position of assistant treasurer collector. M S twelve, entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
Come on. Second.
Okay, motion in second, um, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. So you should have the memo here from Nor, as well as my, uh, memo that I, uh, have provided to you. So, if you remember correctly, the, um, we had a payroll and benefits person that was in the treasurer's office, um, and then we had a cash management specialist position in the treasurer's office. The former town manager, when he created the human resources director office, had the human resources director, assistant town manager, and a human resource specialist, uh, that he transitioned to human resource specialist benefits. When I got here ten weeks ago, we had many conversations with Nor, and then subsequent conversations with our income and treasurer collector as to where payroll and benefits should be, and whether we needed an actual payroll and benefits individual, as opposed to the human resources benefits person that's up in Nor's office. Nor's belief and Michelle's belief, as well as, um, conversations that I've had with other individuals that I trust, is that a payroll and benefits position is truly needed and should be out of the treasurer collector's office. When talking with Michelle about what kind of position would that be, would it be that payroll and benefits specifically? She wants to create the position as a treasurer slash, assistant treasurer collect, collector with those duties of, um, payroll and benefits embedded within, uh, to assist payroll and benefits within that position, because she wants a lot of cross-training, so that we have additional individuals to manage the office. So, that's where the job description came for assistant treasurer collector, which is at the same, um, step, uh, class, job classification as what the human resources benefits person was, as well as the treas, assistant treasurer, assistant treasurer collector's job classifications are. So we're not adding a position, we're simply taking the position that's up in the human resources office and moving it to the treasurer collector's office.
Uh, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair Trill, is that what, will allow us to bring the payroll from the school department as well to here, or no?
No, payroll stays at the school as well. I mean, we work through the payroll, I mean, we process payroll, but they input the information, so.
They have two employees that do that, right, I think, over there, yeah, so.
I believe, yeah, they do, yeah. And payroll and benefits has been the biggest, um, concern that we've had with that treasurer collector's office, and where it actually should be, we've already transitioned a desk down to that office, so that they have a workspace, so.
Thank you, Chair Trill, uh, that will avoid, avoid, uh, problem, uh, we have in the past, paying employee that doesn't work for the town anymore, insurance, all that, when you separate that person to payroll, he won't recognize who's working for the town or not, how he will.
Conceivable, they would, yes, because they're handling all the payroll and benefits out of that office. And insurance.
So they will know who's got terminate or is not working, or going through that office.
We go.
How, how, how is that handled now?
Counsel Shenyu?
How is that handled now, uh? So we not doing that anymore? How, how do we handle that? Where employees that are no longer here, 'cause if you look at the retirement board, it's a whole bunch of employees that are gone. How do we handle to verify that we're not paying for those employees now?
I'll, uh, let Nor address that?
Sure, Nor.
So, because, as you know, there was an issue, so there was no, um, mechanism in place of, um, reconciling, you know, um, when someone leaves, ending the deductions or ending their, um, their enrollment for medical. Um, right now, that is, I'm keeping up with it, um, definitely needs to be one person's job, but, um, I can't speak to what was done in the past.
Uh, Chairman Lo?
The new finance director coming on board, I think the reconfiguration and the work that's happening with the finance department is to realign everything. It's almost a turnaround plan of the way we do business, in the way we should be doing business, and, uh, I think moving forward, this is, uh, another correction to something that happened that just wasn't working.
Yeah, there's been a lot of pieces that have, uh, been put in place.
There's more to come.
And there's more to come, clearly, uh, but this is, this is definitely one that seems necessary, it seems like it can correct a lot of the problems, avoid I R S penalties as well.
Yeah, ask them, they're having a conversation, I.
Yeah. Um, does anybody else have any discussion that, yes, it's Counsel Marquetti?
I do. So I know it's reorg, so it's, there's no amending it, it's either up or down with the council on reorganization. But I'm reading the, the part of the charter, uh, action requiring a bylaw, and it said that in addition, other acts required by law,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, or this charter shall be done by a bylaw, those acts of the Town Council shall be by a bylaw, which adopt or amend administrative bylaws, or establish, alter, or abolish any town department. So I'm just questioning, does this need to be read, would you agree with me that this needs to be read at three meetings?
I don't, I don't believe so, I mean, they didn't do it the last, I, I get past practice. All I'm trying to do is to make it efficient, and, and, I, it's not a bylaw, so you're not establishing a whole new department, you're taking a payroll.
No, I, and I agree, it's a good idea. But it does say you're altering or abolishing a town department.
I'm not abolishing a town.
You're altering it, you're altering the department. I'm not opposed to the, the, I'm not opposed to creationism, and I don't think it would really hurt to read it three times, I'm just questioning.
Well, with, then you're delaying the hiring of that individual. Three meetings is a month and a half to two months.
When we got rid of the th- third person in the front office, did we have to read it three times to get rid of that part-time position that's along there?
Can I see the charter, 'cause I, I don't believe that.
'Cause, that's not, you're, you're misinterpreting the charter, I think.
No, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I think it's a great idea, but it's.
Chairman Lozo?
Huh?
Did we do three readings on the creation of the charter?
Sure.
How about reorganizing the police department?
The thing is, I've never heard of it before, three readings, not by law.
Me either, this is a misinterpretation of the charter.
It's not a charter change, it's a management reorganization. And I think with the management reorganization, I was always under the impression, I could be wrong, and I would like to be, if somebody has a, an explanation that when we, with the town manager, under one section of the chart says the town manager's the only one that can reorganize or create, and then I turn around and say, okay, so we've done it that way, and all of a sudden now, we're moving forward, what we're doing is we're putting it back the way it was in a stronger detailed charter description. So for myself, I don't see it as a bylaw.
Yeah, um.
It's personnel change.
Yeah, I, yeah, we're not doing a bylaw change, so we're not.
All right.
I, I mean, that's my, would be my interpretation as a.
To me, it says that if you're altering a department, it needs to be a bylaw, but I, I'm just asking if that, if, if.
In addition to other acts required by law by this charter, it would be done by a bylaw.
And a bylaw would be altering a department.
By a bylaw. So that would be if you're, if you're proposing a bylaw to alter the department, I'm not proposing a bylaw to alter the department. You're returning, can you read that? I mean, you're, two, seven, one.
The council, the, the charter's for council to interpret.
I'm asking a citizen member of the council to ask as loyal of, of what he, he thinks of a bylaw.
I, I just want, I wanna say that I do agree it's a good idea, I think the treasury department does need to be, um, reorga, reorganized, and I know that we don't, the council still votes on it, but we don't amend it, it's either a vote yes or no. And I'm just questioning whether or not it needs to be read at three meetings, which I don't think would hurt, but that's an interpretation, I guess, for the council.
Yes, it would hurt.
If the councils wanted to decide that that's not what that means, I think that's what it means.
This doesn't even say anything in two, seven, one about three readings, this has never been done before, and absolutely would hurt in, in wasting time.
Bylaw is.
Uh, Counsel Dow, do you have something to add?
Thank you, Chair Trill, I agree with, uh, Counsel Marquetti, but meantime, uh, nobody have the right answer, we can move up to the Town Council, uh, meeting, we'll move forward, this is my recommendation, and then we can look up, you know, later what we should do or what we should fix, if we have to fix something. All right. Like I said, I am in favor of it? 'Cause we really need it, you know? Yeah, I agree.
This isn't, this isn't, yeah, section six is the creation of bylaws, which is where it talks about free readings. You're reading from section seven, which is actoring, action requiring a bylaw. It must state somewhere in the bylaws that the Town Council and the Town Manager can abolish and do things. You don't need to read a bylaw three times to enact it, you just follow the bylaws, you intercreate bylaw, you need three.
Can I make a motion to move the?
You can't, I don't think you can move the question of subcommittee, but we can, we can, uh,
No, but, but also.
You're reading two different sections, and I just think that we should either recommend or not recommend this thing, and I think, uh, is there any other discussion about whether or not we would like this assistant?
No, I think it's a great idea, needs, needs to be done, absolutely.
Yeah. Um, all right, and then all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present? S- agenda item number seven, review, discuss the town manager's recommendation to create the position of executive officer town operations. A five, part-time, twenty-four hours, entertain a motion to recommend that the Town Council approve the position.
So.
Is there a second? Second, second, okay, discussion, uh, Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Um, this is, this, this issue has taken a lot of deliberation on my part in conversations with, um, how best to move our finance department forward and the Town of Southbridge. We can talk about how many positions we've had in the past and who has done what in the past, however, the current situation of our town hall finance department is at a critical level. We have interim assessor, interim treasurer. Interim treasurer-collector with hopefully the new person coming aboard on Ju- June, January second. She's contracted, we hope that still happens. And we have an accountant that has less than two years of experience with no institutional knowledge. I get here ten weeks ago, I take a look at the budget, trying to get a handle on it, give them support to. The accountant looking at what needs to be done for the future, i.e. curbside enterprise fund. And I look at what the capacity we have in town hall to make sure that we put the town on the right financial footing for the future. I have found that we need somebody, especially with some of these issues that we are uncovering, i.e. the health insurance at ninety thousand dollars that wasn't taken care of, thirteen thousand for that insurance. A grant that we had from the state for sixty-five hundred dollars that the money had to be returned because paperwork didn't get sent back in time. Other grants that are requiring a follow-up. And I look at the budget itself when I'm trying to work with the accountant that we hired to assist our accountant, who's very talented, trying to get a handle on the current water enterprise funds, sewer enterprise funds, and finding that we don't have any institutional knowledge as to these budgets and the accounting and how we build it for the future. This plan is to have an individual come in, also talking with the incoming treasurer-collector at the office because of the state it's been in for the last two plus years. There's been no tax title, um, review of tax title, uh, oxygen of properties, water and sewer building that hasn't, past collections that haven't been addressed, there's gonna be a lot of work within that office just with her hitting the ground trying to organize that office, that we need somebody to come in and assist us to look into these different accounts and to assist with those departments to build capacity. And that's my goal, is to build capacity, so the part-time individual would help build capacity. Do I have an individual in mind? Absolutely, I'll be honest with you. I have the individual, it's a retired individual from the town, um, from town and local government that is very familiar with the town of Southbridge. Set up the water and sewer enterprise funds for the town of Southbridge when he was employed here. Is also familiar on, as a school superintendent, or has school superintendent certifications that can also look into what we pay the schools and make sure that our net school spending is accurate, make sure that we're getting the right accountability for net school spending, so that we don't have those, because there's been some talk that we might not meet net school spending because of some accounting issues. So, that's why this job description and this proposal has been brought forward.
Very good. Does anybody have any discussion? Councillor Marketti.
Thank you. Uh, so this person would be working in your office with a finance office?
Would be working collectively as a liaison between the town manager's office and the finance office. Through the assessors, the accountant, and treasurer-collectors.
I thought when Mc- McCall did his reorg, I thought he included a part-time person in town manager's office.
There was somebody and they eliminated that in the budget.
Okay.
So, no, they had another admin person in the budget, that they eliminated that position as well, which was part of that reorg that he had, that he, what this, they didn't fill the position, this person went.
Is that the one that has the chart in it?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was, I thought I saw in the chart that he had an extra person in his office.
He did, and it was eliminated.
It was too far time.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, it's, it is a critical need right now, it, it really is, I, I, I I am very concerned about our financial path and making sure that we're on a good footing for the future.
So, does the member Clements?
So, you've said more than once, this is a critical need right now.
It is.
So, this is temporary?
I, I, it's a minimum of three years, because the treasurer-collector has said she has three to five years of backlog to get that office cleaned up, and that comes from Joanne, and it comes from the incoming new person.
This is a, almost a hundred thousand dollars disposition.
But it's seventy-five thousand, with no benefits because he's retired. Outside of holidays. I've thought about this very critically, uh, Ms. Clements, I, I really have, and if, if I didn't think it was a need, I honestly wouldn't do it, but you, when I have a conversation in my office, come up and have a conversation in my office, because I'll, I'll, I'll lay it out, what's going on right now. We, we the budget that was put together for this fiscal year is, I have no idea how it was put together, and when we look at some of the finances in town, it, it, it is a concern. And this is not because of lack of experience on my part, it's because of an analysis of where we're at in my conversations with different financial people that service out of town about the inability to be able to get a handle on where our numbers are. We had a lot, we lost a lot of institutional knowledge with an accountant that left that had fifteen plus years of doing it the way she did it, and trying to recreate it and to try to make it work so that people can understand how enterprise funds were set up. When we go to set up FY twenty-four and we can't explain how they got to those enterprise numbers, that's kinda concerning, and I need an individual here to dig into that, because we don't have the capacity with the staff that we have.
So, the follow-up, don't you have to post this? Yeah, you say you have a requirement, I can't check it, post it.
I'm gladly posted, but I do have the individual in mind.
I don't think it's a gladly, I thought, isn't it a requirement that you post positions?
I, I don't think there is a requirement, but I will post it.
Well, it's state law, if you prefer.
Is there a state law?
What state law? Chairman Lozo?
It's hard to have this conversation without hacking some past employees. And I'm not in, interested in hacking any past employees. But when you go into a computer, or you go into the database, or you go into whatever you gotta look in, journal or whatever, and you find out that you can't find something that's there somewhere in the paperwork. We had a person that was doing half journal and half munis. He didn't like munis. We are the only town in three hundred fifty-one cities and towns that didn't like munis. When our department head goes in and looks at, you know, how much money do I have to work on these projects? This is what's happening. They don't know where the money is, but it's been appropriated, where they go. Okay, then they turn it over and they go, well, now bills aren't getting paid. It's an embarrassing situation right now because of the way it was set up and the way it was operated. Now, I would say you gotta know the history before you can move forward. What, what we're looking at is a mess. As chairman, I feel like I'm batting cleanup, okay, we're not moving a lot of big pieces around. We need to get a grip on our finance department. And this is why we hired the girl we hired with the experience she had, and we also need to tackle these problems. I've never seen so many prior year bills, because you have to close out at a certain point to be open, you have to audit, the budget's coming. We have deadlines between now and February that if we don't get stuff done, we're gonna be in a bigger dilemma, the hole gets bigger. Without getting into the particulars, as the town manager has said, any members would like to talk to him, go to the office and he can have that conversation. But I, as I sit here, I'm biting my toe, and I'm saying, I'm totally in favor of what is being proposed here, only for one reason. I don't wanna use the boogeyman, but if it doesn't happen, God bless Southbridge when, uh, budget season comes.
And we will post the position.
Councillor Shenyi.
I'm gonna fully, I'm giving back what the town manager's suggestion because of, of a little bit of knowledge of what's going on with our financial picture. Uh, it is my belief that if we don't support the financial reorganization, that we are very near a financial emergency where if we don't put our house in order, somebody's gonna come in here and take our house and put it in order. And we know what that has been like with the school. When I hear from employees that been waiting since early September on reimbursements, when I hear that school service is not getting or threatened, the food's not gonna be delivered, that we are in a dire state without financial department, and the town manager acknowledges that it's a fix that just him alone can't do. And we, as councillors and steward of the financial burden that is on this town, needs to support it. We, we're, we're in trouble. I was told today, one department owns with over a hundred outstanding bills waiting to be paid, over a hundred. So, I'm gonna support what the town manager wants to do, and I would hope the other town councillors do the same. We're, we're in trouble, so if we nitpick at whether we're meeting the law of employment or the charter or the bylaws, I believe that the town manager in his knowledge and wisdom has brought forward what he thinks is the best and legal way to do things, so I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind him.
Thank you. Um, mister citizen member Kelly.
Thank you. I think we've hired you, Jack, to do a job for the town, um, and I think we should defer to you in situations where you're trying to manage the current town, this town situation, so I certainly would defer to your judgment on what you need to do your job. Um, my only concern would be that we do post it.
We will, no, no, I, I can, we will.
Um, uh, and, and, because we may find, you know, a very qualified candidate set there.
Yeah.
My comment.
Thank you, citizen member Clements.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear about this, because you mentioned numbers. Um, it says it's an A five, and an A five is ninety-four to one ten.
Yeah, prorated for seventy-five and twenty-four for hours.
Okay. So, how many hours?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours. I mean, I could simply come in and say I want an assistant town manager and be able to justify it, but I, that town's not prepared for that. This is, this is a opportunity for us to, to have a position that would be able to supplement a variety of different units within the building.
Okay.
Just my last thought.
Yeah, councillor Marketti.
Um, and you don't think that the, the new person that you've hired, she won't be able to handle the, this, uh, that part that you have going?
No, I, I I look at it like I said, the treasurer-collector's office, and, and she knows what, what she's up against. I mean, there's reconciliations, uh, that have to be completed in that office that need to be up to date. Um, the municipal liens that have to be processed, the tax title, um, and learn, um, uh, the budget processes as well for us. Um, she definitely would need somebody to supplement it, it would be too much for her to come in in Ja- Ja- in January to be able to tackle all those, all those, um, individual issues. Uh, she's well aware of those challenges, but I've had conversations with her about the supplemental assistance that I'm trying to give, not just to her, but also our accountant and our assessor's office as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you councillor Marketti, and councillor Rebus?
Um, yes, I just wanted to clarify between the assistant treasurer and the upper position, executive officer of town operations, and sort of the qualifications.
Mm-hmm.
One of them says high school diploma, is that the assistant treasurer?
Yes, it's assistant treasurer, yeah.
Okay, I'm wondering if this person is gonna be taking on all of these responsibilities and all of these really important tasks. Um, should we have a higher, you know, degree of qualification rather than high school diploma?
Well, it says associate's degree in business as well, doesn't just say high school diploma, it says associate's degree in business in the job description.
But we're on a different agenda.
I know, she's talking about that, but it's high school diploma, associate's degree in business, secretary of science, three to five years of experience.
Yeah, it says preferred, so.
Right.
I mean, we look at all qualifications.
I'm just wondering if it should be required rather than preferred.
Well, fortunately, that item is, uh, already passed, but if anybody has any other discussion on item, agenda number seven, um, I just, I just wanna say, you know, in, in the last few years, the, the, the voters have created a really, really awesome town council of nine councillors, and it's our job now to have, for this town manager, a finance team that we can create for him and for the town of Southbridge and the taxpayers, there's nothing more important in this town than the taxpayers and their money. And this whole thing that is happening is the team that we need to build for our citizens and for our town manager, and I fully support this myself, um, and, uh, mister chairman Lozo?
Just one quick comment, keep in mind this is a temporary thing, because once it's straightened out, and because accounting is, is a process, once it's straightened out and everything's put in proper place and entered into the unit system, the accountability and all is like, will work itself out, that's why this position is temporary. It's not like a forever, because I think it's to address the immediate problem, as, as you said, situation. And now, once the situation is gone, then we go back to a normal type operation.
Much like the DPW operation interim position, and so, as. Yes, mister manager.
In the past, people have said, you know, town managers like to be empire builders, I'm not trying to build an empire, I'm trying to be strategic in what we target, especially here. And I think the, what adds a lot of critical need to it as well is that we have to institute this curbside enterprise fund, and that is gonna take some oversight to be able to do that, and that we don't have the capacity right now to do that with the staff that we have. So, when you add that, plus the issues that we've had, um, with, uh, uh, an account that's working as hard as she can but needs some assistance, um, in the other staff, and that, that's why it's such a critical need. If, if we were all leveled, I wouldn't even have been coming to this, but when you try to add all that to the plate of a staff that's overwhelmed as it is, it's, it's, that's why it's as critical as I, I, I say it is.
Okay, well, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Uh, agenda number eight, review discuss change of schedule one and add to positions. Assistant treasurer-collector MS twelve, and executive officer town operations A five. Entertain a motion to recommend the council to approve the changes in schedule one.
I'll move.
Second. Thank you, um, mister chair, uh, uh, town manager, this seems like.
To put it on the schedule.
Yep. Does anybody have any further discussion on what's going on? Um, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Agenda number nine is adjournment. Um, all those in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned at, uh, six forty-eight?